2014 proposed zoning ordinance amendments, public hearing amendments to the town zoning ordinance articles as follow. One, amend Article One, General, Section 1.6 definitions to add a definition of impervious surface. Two, amend Article Four, Dimensional Requirements, Section 4.8. To reduce the maximum permitted amount of impervious sealed surface indicated as a percentage for the zoning districts to set forth new standards for impervious surface coverage for redevelopment. The new percentage and standards will be outlined in a footnote to the Dimensional Requirement Table. Shall we take these one at a time?
Yeah.
Yes.
And you do have the latest version.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me ask a quick question. If there's no stipulated date in here, am I to assume that if this passes at the vote in March, that it would become effective immediately? Or do you need to put some kind of a date on it?
No, effective immediately.
It would be effective immediately.
Doesn't it go into effect now as soon as we put it on the ballot?
As soon as it's listed, yeah.
Well, yeah. Yeah, okay.
That's been voted on.
But once the vote is final, then it's locked in. Great. Oh, my goodness, look at that.
Come back, come back.
Nathan did it.
Nice going, Nathan.
Yeah, you don't have the right karma today, Nathan.
That's a good sign.
I'd say hold it for a second.
I'd say hold it too, yep.
I see us buying more technology.
In that way.
We have a different color light though.
Something blinking.
Yeah, they're from green to red.
Is your computer still giving?
Yeah, the lights are on.
There we go.
What you got? Just took a set of rain.
You're over the old dog box, aren't you?
Just skinny guy to do it.
Ouch. He can barely reach it.
I'm Jay Deener with the Hampton Conservation Commission, and this is Nathan Page who is filling in for Ryan as our Conservation Coordinator. And we're here to talk about impervious surface. And the reason we're here to talk about impervious surfaces is because there is a flooding problem in the town of Hampton. And there are a lot of causes for the flooding in Hampton, but we believe and research has shown that the amount of impervious cover that we have is a significant contributor to that. So we're proposing two warrant articles that will help to address them. Impervious surface is any hard surface over which water will run rather than soak in. Rainwater, snow melt from the roofs runs across impervious surface, it doesn't have a chance to infiltrate into the ground. How much impervious surface cover is too much? At 10 percent, your water resources are protected. At anything above 10 percent, they begin to become impacted. At approximately 23, 25 percent, your water resources are degraded, and you're in pretty significant trouble. When you exceed 10 percent of impervious surface cover, the size and frequency of flooding increases. Pollutant loads increase, and that includes runoff from your driveways, oil and other fluids from your cars, pesticides, fertilizers from your yard, bacteria from animal waste. You have increased shellfish diseases and beach closures, and we saw that in North Hampton earlier this year with pollution coming down Little River. You have stream channel erosion, degradation of aquatic habitat, and perhaps as importantly, if not more importantly, reduced groundwater recharge. Where does Hampton fit into this? Since we started measuring in 1990, our water resources have been impacted. Since about 1993, we've gone from impacted to degraded. And we are continuing to decline. The amount of impervious coverage we have has increased from 20 percent to currently about 30 percent, and that includes just uplands. It does not include the marsh, it does not include any of our wetlands. The first warrant article we're proposing is a definition of impervious surface. There is none in our current zoning ordinances. We discussed this the last time we were here, and there was a concern about how to deal with gravel driveways, crushed stone driveways.
You didn't come to see me on the driveway.
But I drove by and I walked by many times.
Yeah.
And I believe you, but that's one example of how a driveway handles things. And we needed something, we needed to find a definition that would cover basically all eventualities.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's just that it rained, we haven't had much rain this year. It rained, what, a couple, a day or so ago, and within probably five to 10 minutes.
Well, he's not on your rain schedule.
And about five to 10 minutes, the puddles in the driveway just went right through.
We were tasked by you folks to go to other resources in the state to find a definition that would work, and what we did was we went to the current Shore Land Water Quality Protection Act and found their definition, which says amongst other things, examples of impervious surfaces include but are not limited to roofs and unless designed to effectively absorb or infiltrate water, decks, patios, and paved gravel or crushed stone driveways, parking areas, and walkways.
Yeah.
That is the only definition for impervious surfaces we found in all of the RSAs. But I think that does a pretty decent job of addressing the issue of whether or not crushed stone and gravel driveways can be considered impervious or not. So I hope you're in agreement with that.
So we're now including gravel and crushed stone driveways are now impervious.
Unless they were designed.
Unless designed.
Unless they're designed. With some sort of understructure or drainage system.
Right.
Okay.
Reasonable.
Now, I agree with that. I used to argue that gravel driveways were impervious a long time ago, but engineers that sat at the same table you were sitting at would argue that they are pervious.
Yep.
But as time and defines go tighter and tighter and tighter, it becomes less and less and less and less and less pervious.
And I think that's why this qualifier is really important and really makes a distinctive difference.
Can I ask a question about roofs? We're seeing more roof gardens. How does that get treated in something like this? I mean, you know, you make exceptions for a whole series of things, but I guess you could include a roof in that if you have a form of treatment, I guess.
And that's exactly how a roof garden would differentiate itself from a standard roof is because it does provide a form of treatment. So before the water hits around, before the water comes off your roof and runs across your driveway and into a stream bed next to your house, it will have received some pre-treatment if there is a roof garden.
There's one that we, down off Gookin Court, off King's Highway that went in about four years ago, to allow them to build further into the setback, they put in a roof garden. It's not, it's the last road they're already going by Gookin Court. It's the last road that goes across there, and they can't really name it right now. I remember they put up a roof garden.
Which way?
No, that's before that. When you go in off King's Highway, the first road which goes down to...
You're talking about rain, rain gardens?
Yeah, they put a rain, no, a roof garden, a...
No, they were going to...
A vegetated roof.
Right. Not the whole roof, but a couple of sections of the roof.
So the section of the roof that has the garden will have some kind of a pipe or something coming through it, so the soil will drain, and then it would go down and...
Yeah.
Hmm.
Do some absorbing first, and then it would drain.
They're interesting structures, but I don't think they're really all that common
in this area.
Yeah.
I haven't seen many of them.
No, but I think we'll probably see more in the future.
Sure.
And before we revisit this...
But if they put fertilizer in the roof garden, well, I'm serious, you're planting plants.
To your point, Jay. Right, we're done, we're good.
Okay.
Is this a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anybody at the public want to speak on it?
Well, no, I just didn't want to get hung up on roof gardens, that wasn't really part of it.
Okay, so this definition is one article that we would like to put forward.
Okay.
We feel it's appropriate that there be a definition of impervious surfaces in our town ordinances.
Yeah.
Exactly. It's like hot top.
We also wanted to look at how Hampton stacks up, if you will, against other communities along the seacoast as far as impervious surface coverage is concerned. Our aquifer protection zone allows 60 percent coverage for industrial or business and 25 percent for residential. And if you look down the chart of other communities that have an aquifer protection zone, we're higher than all of them. And I believe that most of them don't differentiate between residential and other zones. So if you can see, the range is from 10 to 35 percent. If you look at residential zones, residential coverage, we are again higher than all of the other communities that have impervious coverage limitations for their residential zones. There, the range goes from 15 percent to 75 percent.
Yeah.
If you look at commercial and residential, again, we're at 85 percent. We are higher than all of the communities except for Durham, which has a range from 50 to 100 percent, Exeter, which goes from 85 to 95 percent, and Portsmouth, which goes from 70 to 100 percent. The range for the other communities is from 35 percent to 75 percent.
How do they differentiate in the 70 to 100 percent or 85 to 95? Is that by different overlays in their industrial?
I believe it is.
Or is one for commercial, one for industrial?
I don't know exactly. It is broken down by overlay zones.
I would think Aspel would have to figure in on that too, right? Because what it's already existing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't look at when these limitations came into...
Right, and I'm just saying, I mean, if they're already built out, much of those communities have two acre minimums too.
Yes.
They don't have 50 by 100 lots.
Right.
A lot more landmass, Exeter and Durham, at least Exeter is substantially bigger than Hampton. So, yep.
We have less uplands.
They have less.
We have less uplands.
Yeah.
And our uplands are already pretty well developed.
Yeah.
We also wanted to take a look at, in Hampton, impervious coverage by zoning district. Because when we first talked about this last year, one of the concerns was that we were going to be creating a huge hardship for people in some of our zones in the town. So we looked at a representative sample of lots in each of the zones. And if you look at the primary structures in all zones, we're well within even the 85 percent percentage and well within what we're proposing with all but the BS non-residential zone.
Yeah.
That's at a high of 62, roughly 62 and a half percent. If you look at accessory structures, and we define them as decks, porches, entryways, patios, driveways, walkways, there alone, they are also well below the standard. When you look at total impervious coverage, there's really two zones that exceed what we allow now, which is 85 percent, and those are RB non-residential at 94.6 and BS non-residential at 90.2. Everybody else is comfortably within our current allowable percentage.
So this shouldn't make a drastic difference in...
It is going to make a difference.
Most of...
In most cases, we don't believe it's going to make a drastic difference.
Okay.
So now we sort of get to the meat of the matter, which is our proposed new standard for impervious surface coverage in Hampton.
Hmm.
And what we are looking to do is in all of the residential and general zones, including but not limited to RA, RB, RAA, RCS, GI, POR, and AE, from 85 percent to 60 percent. And we chose 60 percent because it is the current high standard in our aquifer protection zone, and it seems a reasonable standard for the town. We talked to some people who were involved in setting the original standard, 85 percent, and to the best of their recollection, there was no science behind that number. It seemed like a reasonable number at the time. So we wanted to have more, a little bit more rationale for choosing the number that we're proposing that we go with now.
Yeah.
In all of Hampton's business zones, we're looking for a reduction in the permitted amount of impervious coverage from 85 percent to 75 percent. We realize that it's unreasonable to ask for the same amount of reduction in those zones as we are in the residential and other general zones. How does this work? These standards would apply to all new construction. It would apply to redevelopment with the following exceptions. Number one, all currently developed lots are grandfathered. This only comes into play when they want to redevelop their lots.
Yeah.
If the amount of redevelopment includes less than 40 percent of the current impervious cover, in other words, if they've got 100 square feet of impervious cover on their lot and their redevelopment proposal includes 40 square feet or less, then they don't have to adhere to the new standard as long as they don't exceed the amount of impervious coverage that they've got. So if they're currently at 85 percent, if their redevelopment does not include the whole property, if it includes roughly 40 percent, then they can keep their impervious coverage. If their redevelopment includes more than 40 percent of their current impervious cover, then they have some choices. They can meet the new standard, or they can put in a system like the Defender System that will enable them to manage their stormwater on site. And if they can do that, then they can maintain their current level of impervious cover.
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
You kind of think so. And their third option, if neither one of those will work, is they can always go to the zoning board and ask for a variance.
They can use pervious pavers or permeable asphalt and other things to, that would be considered a sealed surface.
Can we go back to the chart that showed the percentages current of your audit, which is...
This one?
Yeah, and that was your audit?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So when we go to an RA zone, which is a popular residential part of the community, that's your Glen Hills, your presidential circle, et cetera, we're pushing 60 percent there now.
Right, so on average, they're already...
So if they put an outbuilding or add a garage, they're going to need to get a variance.
If they're at 60 percent, they are not going to need a variance. If they are at 60 percent of impervious coverage now...
60.1 percent. Let's say if they go to 60 point, I'm reading across there, RA.
Right.
Primary building accessories, and we're coming up to, like a swimming pool is impervious. So you're up to 59.18 percent average.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay? And they're going to 60 percent, correct?
Correct.
So our average home is already pushing the 60 percent thing. So it's going to be tough for people to maybe outbuild, I'm being devil's advocate here because I may be one with an outbuilding that needs to add on a garage or something.
Then maybe...
We're going to cause a lot of vari, I mean, how's the building department going to enforce that? I'm just seeing it's pushing, it's pushing it now.
You lost...
We are pushing 60 percent now in the RA zone.
Yeah.
I see we're going to cause problems there with a lot of people needing changes because this is just your audit. It's not the real, it's not the assessment of the whole community, 100 percent of the community in our...
We're going to cause a lot more problems if we keep letting people fill in and make impervious improvements to their property. That's why we're doing this.
I imagine some people would consider that debatable. My point is, is we're bringing on an area that's going to cause a lot of people to have to have their lots surveyed to prove that they can increase their impervious surface. I'm just, I'm trying to look at it from a homeowner.
Sure.
You know, Joe and Mary Sixpack don't have a lot of money, but they've saved up to add the garage on.
Well, look at the RV zones. That's even worse. You've got 70, 94.
Yeah.
I was going where most people live, which are being...
Still have a lot of RV. We do it...
Yeah.
But Keith, it shouldn't be that difficult for them to calculate the amount of impervious coverage they've got on their own lot. And to make a determination as to how close they are to the threshold.
Yeah.
You're only saying this is the average.
Yeah.
Right?
I get that. But it's average of what he took as an audit.
Right. I understand.
It may, it may cause people to, if they're close to the threshold currently and they want to add a structure, a shed, to the yard, to maybe consider turning a deck into, you know, or a patio into porous pavers, something porous.
Yeah.
Or maybe a portion of their driveway, or maybe the walkway that goes up to the front of their house, or maybe adding in a rain garden.
Yeah.
There are a lot of different ways that it can be addressed.
To mitigate.
Yeah, yeah. Are we going to vote?
On the same thought process, RB is already blasted through the situation.
So they're going to go for variances like crazy.
Or they're going to change their properties.
Yeah.
I think it's probably cheaper to get a lawyer into a variance than it is to...
Re-engineer your site.
Re-engineer your site. I mean, because a water defender costs probably a couple grand to install if you don't have the engineering on top of it. So I'm being devil's advocate here.
This is...
You know, you've highlighted the primary building, but if people saw the total impervious in the zone they live in, I think it's a little nerve wracking if you're a homeowner.
Probably have to, if you don't know.
Or if you're the guy living next to Joe and Mary Sixpack, you're counting your blessings that someone cares enough to not let them go any further than they've gone. They've already gone too far, so you've got to reel them in. Just because they own it, you don't just keep letting it go and go and go, that's why it's a problem.
That's why you're doing this.
Some people worry about their neighbors that way. Others say, well, I may want to do it too.
And they can both get an attorney. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, we got to vote to approve both of these to go in the warrant, is that what we're doing tonight?
We at that point...
One at a time, though.
We could.
Yeah.
If we substantially amended, they would have to go for another...
Mark.
Second public hearing.
This looks good.
Well, one thing I would bring up, that this is in contradiction to this. The sub-business zone, the BSS, sub-whatever we're calling it, that one moved to 10 percent.
Addressing that later.
But that's encouraging it in a concentrated area where it's urban.
This contradicts this. I mean, so what's going to happen? This is going to have to exclude the BSS or the BS sub-district.
Sub-district.
Well, this one is a specific...
No, you've got the town center on that.
I do have the town center. The town center moves to 90 percent coverage.
Right.
And with all due respect, if I may address that?
Sure.
I think it's a, I understand the rationale behind that, asking for the 90 percent coverage. I think it does a disservice to the town to incorporate that 90 percent coverage for a couple of reasons. Number one, if you do it in one zone, then you're going to have people in another zone coming and saying, well, what about me? Because I deserve it too. So you're going to open that can of worms. Secondly, I think we've created a number of different ways that people can work with the allowable percentage of coverage to make it, to make it happen, to let them do what they want on their property and still meet the R-recommended standard, or to go get a variance. We're not saying you absolutely have to do this and you have absolutely no other choices.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's in the best interest of the town to give an exception.
Good.
Mark.
You know, I applaud the work. This is two years of work that you guys have put, and I know that. And you've worked hard to do this, and you're dedicated and everything else. But when we're talking about these districts, the people that own these properties, I would say 90 percent of them don't know what they have for impervious on their lots, right? Because why would they be concerned? If I went in and bought a house, it's never, it's never brought up that I got 60 percent or 70 percent impervious on my lot. You know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying, but unless they want to do something different on their lot, it doesn't matter.
Right, exactly. Exactly. But I'm just saying, as a, you know, as a homeowner, probably 90 percent don't know what their impervious surfaces on their house is.
I'll bet it's higher than 90 percent.
Yeah?
Sure.
Right. That's just a point I'm bringing up.
Yeah, no, that's a valid point, but like I said, unless somebody's looking to redevelop, they don't have to be concerned with it.
I agree totally with what we're trying to do.
You're accepting a motion to approve the...
No, we're not...
I want to make sure that they've satisfied.
Oh, the public, sir.
Have you presented all the information you'd like to share? Not quite, right?
I presented all the information, I think, basically, yes. We have a chart that shows how this will play out, but I think, I think you all understand how this works.
Yeah.
So, yes, I'll be happy to answer, and Nathan will be happy to answer any questions that you have, but I think you've got already...
You chose 65 percent.
I'm sorry?
How did you choose 65 percent?
We didn't.
Sixty, 75, I'm sorry.
That's okay, sorry.
Because I was going to ask statewide, state of 75, and they're a kind of a community like we are.
We based it on the percentage allowable in our aquifer protection zone for businesses. It seems like a reasonable percentage, and it seems like a good benchmark and a good target for the town.
And you look at...
Are you growing anxious?
Yes, well, I mean, we're doing the same...
Well, because she's in agreement with this. Mary Louise is anxious to question.
But we're doing the same thing over and over again. I mean, we've seen all the information.
No, we're not. We're talking about it, right.
You look at the Community Oven Project of...
We had the print ovens.
At the north end of town, where that was in the aquifer protection zone, they put that Storm Defender System in, and how wonderful that works up there. It really does a great job relieving the flooding in that area, that property, they contain their runoff in their property. You go out of town, you go up to Greenland, the Tarjay, and they've got the permeable pavement up there. And you go up there on a rainy day and you watch the water come sheeting across the regular asphalt, hit the permeable, it's gone. There's no puddling, nothing. No, there's, there are systems out there to allow this to work. We are looking at, there are places in town, down at the beach, where we're going to build right, they're going to have structures right wall to wall, right up to the, that's the nature of the animal down there. But do we need that downtown as well? Do we need that everywhere in town? And part of our setback system was to help allow for drainage as well.
Well, Mitchell's contained all their water.
Yeah, they're doing it all. They had the storm, I don't want to quote a brand, but they have, I think they have a Storm Defender System there.
Yeah.
It was expertly installed, I heard.
Oh.
Don't forget that we get a lot of rainfall here. We get a lot of snowfall, and that water has to go someplace.
Yeah.
And if we don't allow it adequate room to infiltrate, it's just going to run, stay on the surface. It's going to flood our town. It's going to, it's going to impact our water quality.
In the spirit of moving this along, I'm going to bring it back to the board.
I just caution the promoters or the advocates of this that if people see that and they're in a district where they're over and over 60 percent, they're more than likely not going to support this because they're afraid that it's going to really impact them. I'm just, I'm just saying that this is, it's a big change, and like you said, 90 percent of the people don't know what they have, so they may think they fall into this and it's like, oh my God, if I put a shed... So, I mean, I know there are probably people sitting here at the board... So, I mean, I know there are probably people sitting here at the board that get angry that I play devil's advocate, but there are people at home that are thinking these things. And you're only highlighting the primary building, not the total. So it doesn't show that the total is really what we're trying to whittle down or, or to contain. Um, so there are a lot of the totals that are over sixty percent up there. A lot of totals over seventy-five percent up there.
I bet I'm over sixty percent.
Well, I'll deal with it.
Your grandfather did.
You can get a different.
Let's see remodels.
Keith, we, we understand that it's gonna be a challenge to educate the people in Hampton to exactly what we wanna do, to have them understand what the impacts are and have them understand the importance of this. We understand that. And we've got some time to do it, and we're gonna be working on that, assuming that we get this move to go forward between now and town meeting.
Very good.
As you talk about-
I can see every, uh, building permit for an outbuilding is now gonna have to have a schedule of permeable surface. I mean, it's gonna be amateur measurements, but this, building department's gonna send you away and say, you know, "Tell me what your coverage is."
It shouldn't be, it's too hard to figure.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it's kinda like wetland setbacks now. All of a sudden, we gotta hone a category of, "Go figure it out."
Right, and they're-
Well, look at that driveway, right?
Even this is easier to figure out than wetlands.
Oh, I know. I understand.
You have to have the ruling.
The building department's gonna have another, another form.
As we also look at plans that come before your board, come before our board, go make complaints from neighbors, how many people, they don't even know where their lot line is because they get their sheds on the neighbor's land.
Yeah.
Or on town property or so forth. So that's, that's, they don't, they, they, yes, they probably don't know what their, presented the sealed surface is, but they don't know where their, a lot of them don't know where their property lines are either. So it's, you can't, you can't dumb it down to the lowest common denominator.
And decks are always a sketchy area too, because you guys often recommend the decks be up a certain amount of height to let sunlight in, water infiltration. Now, that contradicts, is that deck now a impervious surface if it was built according to how you wanted it up higher and that sunlight could come in?
Uh-uh.
Or is it, you know, straight down from, shooting down from the sky, overlooking the property?
DES says if it's over six feet off the ground, it's not a permeable surface.
Oh, really?
There are also-
Well, we're calling decks, on the previous one, we're calling them decks. We're not saying decks are higher than six feet or below, under six feet height.
You're saying under six feet is not permeable, above six feet is not?
According to DES.
I think it's the other way around.
The other way around.
Over six feet is permeable.
Right.
Permeable, right.
And, and there is also now, and there's a property out on Batcock that, that installed a permeable decking material. So you can put a deck in two feet off the ground and you can still have vegetation grow underneath it. So there are solutions.
Okay. All right, board. If there's no more questions or comments, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this?
Yes.
Please.
Good evening. I was watching at home, and I, I heard that gravel is not permeable.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Jim Jones.
The Secretary-
Citizen Jones, sixteen Dustin Avenue.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. So I was watching at home, and I heard that-
Yes, sir. And so by definition-
Gravel surfaces are not permeable because-
The Shoreline Protection Act calls out what is that?
I don't care who said it.
I'm sure.
I'm saying the basis of your decision is being made on this assertion that gravel surfaces are not permeable because over time they become compacted and therefore the permeability diminishes to a point of apparently zero.
That's the argument.
But would that not be true of dirt as well? When dirt is sufficiently compacted, it too becomes impermeable, doesn't it?
So are we make dirt illegal?
Are we only violating what the state standard is, or the state-
I, I, I know. That wasn't my question.
Gravel's used as a drive path or a parking path. Is that-
So dirt, parking spot would not be acceptable.
How do you define dirt?
Well, that's my point.
Well, I'm saying, he would probably be-
Gravel has a definition, right?
If it was compacted by driving on it-
Well, by whatever means.
It doesn't matter.
A certain amount of time, then it would be compacted, and it would probably, it would probably turn impervious.
No.
Yes, it would.
It doesn't. My house was built in nineteen-three. The driveway's been there all that time, and the water drains down the driveway.
But yours is gravel, all right?
Well, it's dirt with pet peystone on top.
Right.
Your tires are probably in the same path constantly.
And it drains when it rains.
So then you're against this article.
No, I'm not against the article, but I think it's a silly definition on the, as far as the crushstone is concerned.
All right, so go ahead, sir.
I understand the problem, though. We're trying to address this flooding. Was that correct?
Correct.
Flooding throughout the town.
Flooding, water quality issues.
Right.
Pollution.
So, well, flooding-
Flooding.
Which delivers pollution theoretically. So it's flooding that's the problem is that we're trying to address here.
Well, it's, it's surface water.
Well, that's-
It's surface water, it's runoff. It carries pollution that doesn't have a chance to get filtered
Yeah.
by natural-
Well, subsurface water does not flood. By definition, it's something subsurface, so it's not considered a flood, right? So when I say we're talking about flooding, obviously I'm talking about surface water, okay? We're in agreement on the terms?
Yeah.
Okay. So the problem is, we're trying to address flooding throughout the town, right? Okay. And this would be a problem that needs to be shared throughout the town, wouldn't it?
Correct.
It's a problem that exists throughout the town. So therefore, all property in the town would be, of course, subjected to having to contribute to the solution.
Yeah.
Right? The residents and the businesses shouldn't be separated in terms of giving special treatment. Because, you know, rain that falls on a business doesn't behave differently than rain that falls on a residence. And you take that argument just a little bit further and recognize we have another property entity in town, and that's called government property, much of which is impermeable, namely the roads. Should we make our roads permeable? I mean, they once were permeable. And that's when we didn't have any flooding problems back then, in those days, right? Those were the good old days when we didn't have flooding problems, when the roads were dirt roads, not yet compacted.
Well, I think, in all honesty, they probably had flooding issues in those days as well.
Oh, so this is a, this is a condition of, that's always been in existence as long as there's been humans in Hampton, then? Probably.
Pretty much. When you reclaim land, yeah.
So then the problem is clearly humans.
Unfortunately, maybe that's what Mother Nature would say. I don't know.
I don't think animals did it.
Well, it's-
Beavers.
Well, that's true.
I guess it's sorta like if a tree falls in the woods and nobody's here to hear it. Is there a sound?
Of course there's a sound. A sound being defined by sound waves. Naturally, there's gonna be a sound. Whether it's heard or not, it's still a sound.
That's right.
And just like whether rain falls on a business or on a residence, it's still rain. And if it doesn't permeate the surface, it's gonna contribute to flooding, isn't it? And whether it falls on a government property or a resident property, it's still, that same drop of rain is gonna be an equal contributor to the flooding problem, isn't it?
But we're asking-
So why should, why should we, why should we segregate by class and impose restrictions on the owner of the property based on the class of their property? It doesn't make sense because nature doesn't care, does it? Those raindrops, I'll say, "Oh, I'm falling on a business, therefore I'm going to be, I'm gonna make sure I penetrate the surface before I run away." Right? It doesn't do that.
So what would your solution be?
That's right. That's a million-dollar question.
Well, I haven't seen the definition of the problem enough to actually offer a solution. Where is the flooding occurring? Is it occurring all over town? Or is it occurring just in certain portions of town?
No, but like, we detonated people that have stormwater systems and contain their water in their runoffs on their property before it mitigates to other sections.
So it's treated.
Well, I, I cannot, I cannot repair or, you know, do anything about history of the past.
No, but we're trying to do it.
This is a proposal about going forward.
Yeah. But how do you correct our past problems other than making adjustments to the law?
Well, we need to define the problem with more specificity. I haven't heard any, any, any statements beyond that we have flooding throughout the town. I have been, I've been here for, you know, quite a while. Should I add it up? Like seventeen years, something like that? I live at the beach where flooding is the worst.
Yeah.
I've never been, yeah, I've never been flooded.
And I used to go skating on Dustin Avenue, so.
It's because it never floods, right?
It was filled in to build a condo.
I'm the first public street off the harbor. So you would think I would be like, you know, pretty subject to flood.
It was sand down there, too.
It was all filled in.
Yeah, but, you know, if you look at the properties, like mine, I'm like probably, what, ninety percent asphalt? You know, I was gonna tear it up
Hopefully it's only-
and put down some trees and some grass. And then I heard the discussions about permeable surfaces.
So you changed your decision tonight based on this?
No, not tonight. I heard this in the previous one. So I'm thinking, gee, if I tear it up, then I'm actually causing myself some harm, aren't I? Because later, if I wanna like enclose my deck, and I can come in and say, "Well, I'll enclose my deck, but that's gonna create, you know, an impermeable, permeable surface." But I can alleviate that by taking up the asphalt I was going to take up to put trees by doing it as I make the proposal for the deck. So it delays my decision to put in my trees and so forth. All right? Now, how long is that delay? I don't know.
Well, you save a lot of money by doing it all at once.
Not if I'm doing it myself, which I like to do things myself.
Well, it also depends on the amount of impervious coverage you've got on your lot. If you take out your driveway and put in trees, you may already be reducing the amount to below the standard.
Well, that's my point, but if I take out the trees first, okay? Right now, I'm at ninety percent asphalt, maybe a hundred percent asphalt. Well, it's actually ninety percent. I have a front yard full of seagrass. Seagrass is far more absorbent than regular grass, right? So do I get credit for having seagrass versus regular grass? Do I, do I get, do I lose credit by taking up some of the asphalt, say, in my backyard and my side yard along my driveway by putting in, uh, trees and grass now? And then later, when I come in to say a deck, and they say, "Whoa, wait a minute, you're, you're still at seventy percent permeable." And I say, "Well, I was ninety percent before I, before I did this." And well, yeah, we can't think about that, 'cause that's not part of the proposal now with your deck. There are all kinds of unintended consequences going on here, and I'm only speaking about my property, and I'm only one. Okay? There are many such properties out there with many different vari- I mean, you guys know this. There are many nuances at play here. And I'm simply pointing out that what I'm seeing here is, you know, government saying that, well, you know, "We have a problem, and we're gonna impose essentially a tax." It's not a monetary tax, but it's a, it's a tax on my property. You're restricting my property rights to solve a town-wide problem.
What about your ninety percent that you inherited when you purchased the property?
Uh-huh.
And it's runoff 'cause you aren't managing water, your water that falls, the molecule water that falls on your piece of property. You're not managing it as well. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
I'm not. You're right.
Um, you're forcing a hardship on your budding property because you are not handling your water on your property in a responsible way. I'm not saying you particularly, but some with that much sealed surface.
Well, that's the beauty of it. You see, my asphalt and my property right, based on planning and zoning of the past, has it run right up into the next guy's, uh, building, so-
He was funny.
It's not a problem. I mean, my neighbor actually appreciates it. If I showed grass, he might, he might get mad, 'cause it's kinda puddled.
What a line.
Case in point, right?
Well, it's the truth.
Case in point, though, right? So, um, I think, I, I don't think this is big government, and here I am arguing the other side.
I didn't say, I didn't say big government. I simply said government.
Government, okay. I guess there's really no big government or little government.
I like little government, don't you?
I do.
But, but what, what's the right thing to do? As a citizen of Earth, what is the right thing to do?
A citizen of Earth?
Yeah, I mean, you've gotta be responsible for yourself and your property. It's just, just an, I just pop, pop it, backing it back off to you.
I would yield that I'm an Earthling, but whether I'm a citizen of Earth is another question. I'm a citizen of the town of Hampton.
Let's argue semantics. You know what I meant.
For the public, I wanna be clear that you, there is no such thing in my mind as a citizen of the Earth, but, you know, whatever.
Okay. God bless.
The first thing, the first, most important thing to always take in mind, I think, when you're talking about, oh, should I take it on a personal level or the government level?
You, you're the one that brought-
I'll take it at both, then.
Yeah.
I would say, you know, for me personally, on a personal level, it's, it's really the same as in a government level except that the considerations are larger. On a personal level, as well as a government level, the basic theme is, is the Hippocratic oath, do no harm. All right? And what I'm seeing proposed here is harmful. So I'm saying, let's not do that. Let's not do what we can easily foresee is harmful. And it's really not solving the problem. The previous presentation that Jay made at, I believe, a previous planning meeting I saw on TV, he actually said that this is not gonna solve the problem. It's going to alleviate it to some percentage. The problem's not gonna go away.
Ease it.
So even this proposal doesn't solve the problem, but what it does create is other problems, some of which I've spoke about tonight, some of which just not thought, and we haven't thought about it yet. But they'll, they'll come up, and you'll have people up here complaining about it, and they're all gonna be thinking the same thing that you were thinking, even though I didn't say it. Big government, taking my property rights. If, if you really insist on putting these proposals there, there are two warrant articles, right? One for resident, one for business.
No, one for definition.
One for definition.
Just a definition on the warrant article?
Yes.
There's no-
Different percentages for-
The last meeting I heard, and he actually presented two proposed warrant articles that were actually-
There is two.
I don't have my glasses. I ran down here too damn quick.
He'll take it home with him.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
We're defining the definition of impervious, and then we're, I don't wanna say further restricting, but further-
Creating new standards.
Creating-
Reducing, yeah.
Is there a warrant about creating new standards?
Well, the second page-
Those new standards, those new standards are basically-
Decent percentages.
Right, well, that's what I'm, that's, that is, in fact, a property restriction.
So-
It all is.
It's a, it's a reduction in my property rights. And so those are the two, 'cause you presented them at a, at a previous town, uh, planning board meeting. I saw that. And I was incited, but I was also totally incapable of coming down here at the time.
So, so the solution is to do nothing?
Isn't all zoning and eating property rights-
No, 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 no. You see, I'm gonna die.
Oh, me too.
Right.
I'll join the clip.
Wish I could.
What's the solution?
Well, I'm asking you.
Well, I'm not-
Ask first.
I'm not gonna do anything about it except, except the reality of it and try to do the best I can to, to-
Within the limits of the law, right?
No, I'll work within the limits of nature.
Well, should, should we do nothing? Let me ask you that. Should we do nothing?
No, I think you should, I think you should define the problem well, and then, like any good government body, restrict your solution to address that problem itself. Not to have a broad-based problem for, or broad-based solution for a narrow problem. If we have a few streets flooding, then let's come up with, let's craft a solution that solves that problem, that narrow problem. We don't need to go town-wide to solve a, a, what is, in my mind, a narrow problem.
Like I mentioned a little while ago.
This is not a solution, in my opinion.
I don't understand, if you know, the dedication of the conservation commission in this town and the two years that they've researched this and, and gone through stuff to address the problem town-wide and to come up to some equitable solution. I mean, these people have dedicated many, many, many hours.
Uh-huh. So what's your point?
My point?
Your point is, is because they spent a great deal of time and effort and work and produced a product that's gonna cause harm, we should do it anyway because they did a lot of hard work. I don't get it.
I don't, I don't see the total harm that you're talking about.
Well, I just defined it in my, my specific instance.
I understand what you're saying.
And I also defined it in the broader instance in saying that we've got a generalized problem flooding throughout the town. And you wanna propose that we have a generalized flood, and I don't see that generalized flooding throughout the town. I see there are very narrow areas of town that are subjected to flooding. So first of all, the problem definition- So first of all, the problem definition...
It really isn't.
Doesn't seem to fit with my perception of what's going on.
It really isn't, it really isn't, just because...
My street doesn't flood.
Your street doesn't flood.
But yet you're going to regulate me.
But you can go...
Right? In fairness to all the public, right? If you have other points you'd like to make, we're certainly open to listening to them, but I think the points have all been made and duly noted. I don't know...
And that's what the ballot box is for, right?
Oh, I know that. And that's what public hearings are for, to let you know my thoughts, and that's, that's what I'm doing, is just that. I, I don't mean to be provocative.
Sure you do.
I think you do.
Well, thought provoking, perhaps, yes, okay? I don't mean to be getting, you know, people's emotions involved, I'd rather have their cerebral activity than, than their emotions. Because the truth is, is that we have not a broad-based flooding problem in this town.
We do. We do.
Excuse me, my street does not flood.
Well, your street does not flood.
My street is part of the town.
We are flooding up on Exeter Town Line, we are flooding up on Tyd Mill Road, we are flooding down on North Beach.
Those are defined areas, yes.
Just because your place doesn't flood, doesn't mean the town doesn't have problems.
I didn't say the town didn't have problems. See, this is, this is, we're comparing apples and oranges here, sir.
Well, we're not just going to exclude Dustin Avenue.
It's, it's all over town, Tim.
Well, who's going to say that the runoff from Dustin Avenue...
Say it's all over another street lower than...
Problems all over town with flooding.
If I may, the, the issue is that the source of the flooding is not necessarily at the location of the flooding. So you may have flooding, for example, down at the end of High Street. That water doesn't all just come from High Street, it comes from a variety of different other areas where there is too much impervious surface, so that water is running off and it all winds up at High Street.
That's at Route 1.
We can debate. Is debate this where it is, where it is in?
No, no, his point is very valid, and I want to address it, because it's a very valid point. Because it's running down a street.
I didn't say a street. It's, it's running across all kinds of impervious surfaces, meaning driveways, roofs, sidewalks, patios.
Right, but the fact that you're, you're flooding on High Street is coming from...
Area, High Street area.
Street area. It's coming, it's coming from someplace...
Driveways that are flooding, yeah, it's coming from someplace.
And, and it's coming primarily down roadways, because they're natural canals when it comes to, you know, heavy rains.
It certainly is seeking the lowest elevation to flow.
Yeah, and that would, yeah.
So...
So that's, that's again government property, so I just wanted to point out that...
We appreciate that.
So what you're saying is we need a drainage system and a treatment system.
That, that, that could be, you know, something that, that seems to solve the issue. It's...
It would certainly contribute to help solving...
It's a solution that's point-specific to the problem, certainly, and so, you know, I would see that more favorably, absolutely. Also, again, as I said earlier, you know, gravel not being permeable just strikes me as, you know, nonsensical, because, not only because Mary Louise really is permeable, but also because I know that dirt or anything else constituted as earth is subject to compacting just as easily, or just as much as gravel is. So, you know, I don't see the distinction there.
Well, we're talking about, I believe it's paved gravel or crushed stone driveways, parking areas, walkways, not loose gravel in a gravel pit.
We've identified all of that.
Okay, well, I'll let it go.
It'll always be concerned about the composition of what you, what you have there.
Right, we discussed gravel and all of its issues.
Glory, yes.
Do you have other concerns around this matter?
Yes, I do. As I pointed out, I'm also concerned about, you know, you know, treating different classes of property differently, even though nature's raindrops cannot distinguish one class of property from another. And also, on the proposed warrant article, which I can barely read because I don't have my glasses, but I did read them from the previous meeting, I, I think that we would all be well-served by an informed citizenry, I'm sure everyone agrees with, agrees with that. And relative to the wording on this, I think the citizenry, when it reads it, would be better informed, more accurately informed, if it were prefaced with something to the effect of, "Do you favor further restricting your property rights?"
Yes, I agree with that.
Because that's in fact the truth of what we're doing here. This, this warrant article is going to restrict rights they presently have, and we ought to just say it right up front to them, instead of, you know, wording it in such a way where we can trick them into voting yes.
And I'm not sure that the law allows us to do that.
The law does not allow you to speak the truth.
Not sure.
I'm trying, but everyone keeps wanting to debate these things, so it's not coming to an end.
Saying that that's a leading question, and I'm not sure how the law would allow us to propose that in that sense. I'm saying it's not true, I'm saying that the wording that you use may not be allowable by law.
Like I said, the word, something to the effect that actually conveys to the reader that it is a restriction on what they presently have regarding their property rights.
I understand.
Stop talking to him, maybe.
That would be helpful.
Well...
Go ahead, Mark, I'm happy to answer your any...
No. We certainly heard your opinion, we debated enough tonight, I think.
I've made all the points I've made, if you have a question, I'll answer.
Eddie, I've made your point, and I would suggest if you have any more suggestions, that you write a letter to the editor. Right? Put it in the afternoon union.
How was that? You'll hear me at the deliberative session.
That's fine.
Thank you for coming here.
Thank you for, you know, taking the time and listening to me with open minds, I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not, I don't have any prejudice.
Mark.
I said, "Thank you."
Hi, my name is Sonny Kravitz, I live in the Highlands, St. Sierra. A couple of points. The property's going to be grandfathered, so that's not an issue, but the new owners might be, end up with non-conforming...
They'll be grandfathered as well.
You know, they're the people that would have the problems. The reason I wanted to speak was...
I think you better correct that before...
Liberty Lane, Crossroads Realty, that's the largest...
That's, that's an incorrect statement. The grandfathering goes with the land, not with the owner.
Oh, okay.
It goes with the land, not with the owner, it's, land rights go with the land, so it doesn't matter, we don't care who owns the land.
Yeah, okay.
If your property is grandfathered, then you sell it.
This is what you have to work for.
If you sell it to somebody else, they get that same, it doesn't change for the ownership.
As long as that's...
Just like a zoning variance doesn't change for the ownership.
It only changes if you're making improvements or making changes to the actual property.
No, it would follow the same rules, it would still follow the same rules as if they were the, if they were the original owner.
Right.
It doesn't matter who owns it.
Mary Louise is right, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. The reason I wanted to speak was because of Liberty Lane and Crossroads Realty.
Right.
It's 300 acres, most of it's wetlands.
Yes.
23 Falcone, when he wanted to put a houses there, it's total wetlands, but it's the only way he could get access to the 125 acres down towards, not Route 95. He can't get by aquarium, but he bought number two Falcone, the house that's falling apart, and he gave them a life estate. He's still planning to try to get access to the property. I spoke when he came before the conservation committee, Mr. Wells, remember?
Sure.
And we met with him, and he says he's not going to do anything till 2015, and he wants to get the public input. And we said we'd talk to him, we're waiting for the maps, because the neighbor doesn't have the maps that he was presenting. But my big issue is, that's mostly wetlands.
Oh, yes.
When he wanted to put the multi-units in the cross from the bond for that 10-acre site, that would have created a lot of impervious parking lots. That's not billable for, he doesn't want to do single-family there, but that's his problem.
We're, Sonny, we're just trying to get through this issue of impervious cover, not the specifics of our project two years from now.
Yeah. I saw it down the bottom of the agenda, that's fine.
They would have plenty of opportunities, still, against, but I suspect he wants to develop it.
Boy, it's a tough one.
Can you stand the motion to approve putting Article 1 on the warrant?
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, if you're prepared to make the motion, then I guess we could consider it.
I just did, maybe we put Article 1 on the warrant?
Motion by Mary Louise.
That's the definition.
The definition. The definition you're talking about.
Yes, sir, Article 1, or...
Don't we have to have a second public hearing?
Oh, not if we don't change it.
Not if we don't change it. Okay, I'm just...
Who's alive here, second? Thank you.
I'm a little groggy. Second by Mark, I have a motion by Mary Louise, Fran.
Just questions on process, so the people who are watching understand, if we vote this, or up or down, let's say up, because now it's, it's moot at that point. What's the process, Mark? Is, is this the way it's going to appear on the ballot?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the way you've written it, Jay, and you, as a conservation commission sees fit, then this is the language.
And you've talked to the town attorney, I assume?
This has been through legal...
Planning board article.
Yes.
We have not had the full town legal department review it, the town attorney is out because of a death in the family, so he has not had a chance to look at this as a final look-through yet.
He's looked at it, there was a couple editorial, some editorial changes made, and he's, prior to that, he reviewed it and was pleased with it.
We'll, we'll be going over the warrant articles on Friday as a board anyway, and I'm sure that the attorney will, will do what he's...
Further clarification, I believe, planning board amendments cannot be, articles cannot be amended at the deliberative session.
Correct.
People should understand that. They cannot be amended at the deliberative session.
Right.
So they appear the way we approve them, if we did that?
Yes.
Okay? That's all clarification, just...
I'm voting in favor.
Well, he didn't call for a vote.
Right. Are you satisfied?
I'm chairman.
Have you, have you? Are you satisfied with your clarification? Yes, okay, so...
We're just talking about amendment number one.
Right.
Amendment number one.
It was motion by Mary Louise, it was seconded by Mark, all in favor.
To moving it to the ballot.
To moving it to the ballot. Opposed?
Are you awake?
Oh, I got one opposition. Anyone abstain?
Okay.
Very good. So, that brings us to number two.